Okay, let's call this meeting to order at 7:05. We have two agenda changes.
Two?
Ape?
We would like to remove item three, the third delegation, and we would like to add an in-camera item, 12D, business interests of third-party FOIP section 16.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Unanimous consent. So I need a motion first for unanimous consent to change it and then a motion to approve it.
Mr. Cutler.
So moved by Counselor Cutler for unanimous consent to remove the following from the agenda, from delegations, number three, Dave Allen remarkets and business license bylaw, and to add the following to the agenda, 13D, in-camera business interests of a third party for FOIP section 13.
16.
Sorry, 16.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Counselor Zimmer?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer that the agenda be accepted as amended.
All in favor? Approved. Adoption of minutes. Deputy Mayor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler that the regular meeting minutes of March 11th, 2024 be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Delegations? Ape?
So first on the agenda is the National Police Federation. They are attending via Zoom, and the, if you recall, they sent out a correspondence item a month or so back with some requests of council to support some correspondents and some advocating efforts, and council wanted to have a bit more information, and so we've coordinated a delegation with them tonight.
Hello?
Hello?
Everybody here?
Good evening. We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, folks, and thanks for having us. My name is Kevin Hall. I'm one of the directors for the National Police Federation right here in Alberta. With me is Jeff McGowan, who's also one of the directors, also from Alberta. I make my home in Salford, Lincoln, just a little bit further north up the Stoney Plain. I believe that, if memory serves, I believe that Jeff and Brian Sauvay and perhaps Vice President Michelle Blutan met with council previously back in, way back in 2021, and at that time it was regards to our Cape Harbor RCP campaign. So thanks for having us back. We appreciate that, and I'll just turn it over to Jeff for a quick introduction.
Yeah, Kevin is correct. It was myself and Vice President and President and one of our government relations personnel, Sarah Nolan. It was April 16th. We want to thank you for your support since then, especially with the letter supporting the, you know, call to action to keep the RCMP. We're very happy with that, and we're here just to reintroduce ourselves. And if I understand correctly, there were some questions that you were looking for follow-up on? I mean, we can, we can explain what we've done on some of the budgetary submissions, or we can, we can jump right into questions, whatever it is you wish.
Counselor Meister?
I think when you came to us, you were asking us for support to put more officers in communities. I don't think our community specifically needs more officers at this time, but what other way would you like support from us as the town of Clare's Home?
Yeah, so that was, that's in regards to our pre-budget asks that we asked for prior to the budget. There was three asks that we made at the provincial government. One was, one was some money to provide 200 additional police officers over, over a period of three years. That was the largest price tag in that budgetary ask. And then the other two asks were funding for the crisis response teams, to widen those out across the, across the province, as well as money to help fund the, the community policing committees that have been mandated by the province. So that was, that was the ask of support on that. Jeff, do you have anything to add on that? I think that was pretty much all that went out with that.
Yeah, and it, and it, it included, as Kevin said, three budgetary asks, and we wanted to touch base, especially since none of the, none of our requests actually made it to the provincial government. They, they didn't support any of that, any of our positions. It's obviously a bit of an issue considering that rural crime has been, you know, much in the media, and a lot of the funding has gone to a lot of the cities. So we were looking to, just to, like I said, touch base and explain, if necessary, some of the Bill 11, the public safety statutes amendment that's coming out, talking about some of the oversight boards, or if there's any questions on that. I know that, if, if I understand correctly, you did not look at the $30,000 grant to study any sort of policing, or like the provincial government's offering. We can speak to that or touch on that if necessary?
Let's hear it.
Well, I guess ultimately, the, the province is offering $30,000, which fundamentally isn't really quite much, to look at whether or not the policing that you have is adequate. And you had stated that you're satisfied with the number of police officers, which is great. We never, we certainly don't, would never argue against somebody looking at that. I figure if you're spending taxpayers' dollars, you ought to be looking as to whether or not you get the best bang for your buck. Obviously, you know, it's prudent to make sure that you're not wasting the taxpayers' monies, money in this instance. Whether or not that's something that's going to be able to examine alternative policing models is, is another question, and I would, I would expect that you would need to put more money in to look at it, but it's certainly not anything that we would, we would argue against. Sorry, there was a question or?
Counselor Cutler?
So, and I, I might be speaking out of turn here too, but we just went through a big two-and-a-half-year kind of pilot project with the two detachments between us and Nant and regarding police services and helping and those types of things. We've, we've got quite a detailed list of what services we have and what services we need, so I don't see the need where we need another $30,000 from the government, you know, wasting time. I mean, that's what I, we've already gone, we've got a good understanding of where we're at and what the services we have here in town, so we're, we're very fortunate to have that, so.
That's, that's good to hear. And like Jeff said, $30,000, if you were, if you were to really get deep dive into it, it wouldn't cover it anyway, so.
Right, yeah.
It is what it is. Back in, back in 2021, I believe that you signed, I think it was '21, you signed on the, that town of Clare's Home, that is, signed on for, to the, our call to action to keep the RCMP in Alberta. We appreciate that. Just wondering if, just wanted to confirm that your, your position on that hasn't changed?
Didn't we just send another? Did we send another one? I don't believe so. We're fully in support of the RCMP.
Great, that's fantastic, great to hear. And you know, you guys got a great crew down there as well, which is, you are very lucky in that, of course. I don't believe Clare's Home nor Nant, that's hub with it, is 24 hours. Is that correct?
Correct.
No, we're not. We have, we have, we have an officer in the, in the room right now who's actually going to present after you guys, so he's feeding us the answers, so. No, we do not have 24-hour service. And he was proud when you said that we had a good crew down here.
You know, I can only speak the truth.
Yeah, right, right.
So, lots of the truth here, and you know, and had the province considered our budgetary ask of increasing rural police officers, that may have been something that could have been considered, to place some more bodies down in that neck of the woods to allow 24-hour coverage. But if that's, but I'm glad to hear that you're satisfied with the policing that's being provided and that's not overly a concern for you, that's great to hear.
In 2021, you did a presentation, and in your contract with Alberta from Ottawa, there was room for 360 more officers in Alberta, right?
Well, it's not, it's not even really a question of what we have room for, it's what the government is willing to sign off on. The way that the provincial policing agreement works is that the, the, with, in consultation with provincial minister of the government of the day, they determine what the minimum level of policing that they're looking for. So ultimately, the minister, the provincial government, has the opportunity to increase or decrease, depending on how things go. Article five within the provincial policing agreement allows for the provincial minister to just, if, if he says, "I want 100 new police officers," then the RCMP is obligated to fulfill that within the next year. Everything is dependent on what the ask is, because in the end, obviously, the, the province is, is the contracting partner. So it's, it's actually been good, I'm not sure if you've been listening to some of the news, they've been concerned about some of the recruiting numbers, but I'm, I'm happy to say that we, I was just looking, it came out March 20th, our national numbers, we've, we've now, January 2024, we have 14,455 applicants in, in the, in the different varying stages of recruiting. That's an increase of 49% over last year. Depot is moving up, like we're, we're starting to really increase that complement. K-Division, or Alberta itself, has, has gone up, and we're averaging 200 applicants per month, and it keeps trending up, which is very nice to see. And one of the things that the RCMP is currently doing is they're trying to, I don't know if it's a generational, generational thing, but a lot of the people that are getting hired want to return to their home province, at the very least. So we're looking at bringing back a lot of those people. In the last 12 months itself, we've, we've increased from 1,480 Albertans, Albertans applying, to 2,260. So things are really trending up, like we're, we're able to, you know, knock on wood, they all make it through Depot, we're able to increase the number of police officers. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's certainly something that the government has control over and are capable of doing. Unfortunately, as you saw in the last budget, we haven't seen that money actually going to increasing any of the police officers in the RCMP policed areas, and that's, well, ultimately a government decision.
Thank you. Is there any truth to the fact we hear from our provincial government that Ottawa is going to get out of contracting policing?
Zero, no. Zero truth to that at all. It's, it's something that the provincial minister mentions routinely. The fact of the matter is that it's never been, it's never been said coming out of the federal government that there's any interest of getting into contract policing. Now, what they may do is ranging how the provincial contract works. So currently, right now, in the province of Alberta, for example, the, the federal government has several different policing contracts. They have one that does the, looks after the provincial policing agreement, so that's the rural areas, much like Clare's Home and Nant and most places. And then additional to that, it also has several municipal contracts with the larger municipalities, and the Fort Marys, the Red Deers, the Grand Pries, Arigues, those places, where they have their separate municipal contracts directly with the federal government. What that hap, what happens then is when those contracts become, come time to get renewed, the, the federal government, sorry, is now negotiating multiple contracts within the province of Alberta as opposed to just one. British Columbia does, uses a different model where they have one contract with the province, and then all those munis, what in Alberta would be municipal contracts are dealt with by the province of British Columbia and not directly through the federal government. So as a result, in B.C., for example, the federal government negotiates one contract as opposed to, you know, a dozen or so. So there's a, there's efficiencies to be had there for sure, just by, just by ranging in the way the contracts work. So I, you know, I suspect you might be able, you might see some of, some of that changing in the next contract that's coming in 2032, but as far as getting out of contract policing, it's just not true.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's nothing, what they're doing ultimately with any of those, with any of the reviews is how do we make it better? And I think, quite honestly, it's a good plan. They need to start looking at efficiencies, one of which obviously is trying to whittle down the large number of contracts, individual contracts that they have here in Alberta, and just going with the one contract in, like, like they have in B.C. It is unlikely, especially after a lot of these inquiries that you end up seeing that are coming out, where you're looking at having a national standard for policing. And quite frankly, the RCMP is best positioned to do that. We have national training standards, and for the most part, we lead the way in a lot of the, the innovation, technology, and training. Unfortunately, with that comes a huge target, which is why it's always a lot of, you know, a lot of negative press, which is unfortunate, because we have a lot of, of real good successes, they never actually make it into the public. It's very, very private for a lot of people. Needless to say, it, it isn't anything that the government is, is, the federal government, that is, is planning on doing, because that would mean B.C., all the territories, Saskatchewan, Alberta, Manitoba, Nova Sibley Maritime Provinces, they would all be all of a sudden stuck with this massive, it would be chaos ultimately, and I don't see that happening in this case. Like I said, there hasn't been any indication, and they've never stated that. The contract is going to be, it comes due in 2032, but they sign 20-year contracts. So they get into the position where they have to start looking at when, when they start to renew it, and you start to see that usually a little bit later than what's been happening now, but I suspect that, especially within Alberta, there tends to be some animosity with Ottawa and the current, perhaps, the federal government, and I think that may or may not taint some of the, the discussions or comments surrounding the RCMP, which is unfortunate, because even though we're like the federal police force, we don't answer to the federal government. That's not how it works. That's not how the laws work, that's not how provinces work, that's not how the criminal justice system works. So it's unfortunate, it's being confused, as it were.
Counselor Carlson?
Sorry, so just on the respect of cost efficiencies and, and contracting, it seems like our provincial, provincial government at this time is taking their views from, from that pedestal first. As far as the setup for depot and training officers and implementing officers into communities versus the talk of upgrading skills for sheriffs and taking on extra responsibilities and expanding that system, would you folks have any ability to put numbers together as far as what it would take from the RCMP's standpoint of those, bringing an officer online versus the private system that the Alberta government's looking at right now?
You, I'm just clarifying, are you, are you talking about the timeline it takes to train or?
Timeline and cost. It, it appears that if the provincial government takes a step towards creating a sheriff's depot or a system like that versus what the RCMP currently have installed, what that would look like, I think the communication aspect of that, if, if, how do I put it? The, the dollars spent to put a, put an RCMP officer on the street versus what the province would be spending to put an officer on the street for themselves, that would be of interest.
Yeah, you know, we, you know, we have some numbers that, that were discussed during our Cape Harbor RCP campaign, you know, this, which, which apparently are a couple of years old, so the numbers are probably a little low now. But back then, you know, the discussion was, you know, what it would cost to create a new police, provincial police service, and what you're talking about there is not really that much different. At that time, the startup costs were estimated at $371 million. That's if it's on time and if it's on budget. It was estimated to take four years to, for that to start, start to finish. I highly like, I highly doubt that that would be likely either, and I, and I'll use the, I'll use the comparison to SURE, for example. For those of you who don't know, SURE is in the midst of a transition from the RCMP to a municipal police service, and it's been going on now for about six years, and is nowhere close to being done. It was originally estimated at $19 million transition costs, and it's ballooned to well over 120 million now, and the price keeps going up. So when you start doing some comparisons, just on the transition costs, you know, SURE, one location, 450,000 people somewhere in there, as opposed to 113 locations in Alberta, and about 1.5 million people being policed. So it's clear, easy to see how moving a whole province from the RCMP to something new would be very complicated and very expensive. That's just the transition cost. By the government's own estimates, if it were to move to, at that time, again, they were talking about a virtual police service, but, you know, we're talking about something new here, I suspect similar numbers would apply. At that time, it was estimated that the, the additional annual costs, so this is outside, on top of the transition costs, were estimated at $168 million each and every year. And again, that price is just going up and up and up and up and up. And I believe, Jeff may have the number off the top of his head, but for that same $168 million, I believe we estimated that, was it 400 additional, or 600 extra?
I thought it was 600.
Yeah, 600 additional numbers, that same amount of money. And then what I should add too is that, so for, and that's just for that $168 million that the government agrees would cost extra. They could get 600 additional RCMP officers for that same price. And again, I can't remember where I was going with that, those are based on numbers that are now three years old, so that's, you know, those numbers are even going to be higher than that now.
Yeah, and it's, I, I guess, I guess part of the issue, obviously, is that there's already an infrastructure and a process and a program created and policies, et cetera, that are currently in place. So with, a lot of these things are tough to actually quantify and, and find, like, add a number to. Even then, I guess, I guess in the end, the ultimate question is, what is the objective of a transition? Is, if the objective is to improve public safety, I would argue that changing the stripe on the leg or the police officer is not necessarily going to do that. What, what really, to my mind, the focus should be is on the justice system, where we have more judges, more prosecutors, more jails, and we start actually addressing the crime problem, because the numbers, when you're looking at what, what the police do, and, and I'm talking all the police within the province, including the municipal, municipal police officers, they're arresting, like, we're catching lots of bad guys all over the place. The issue, of course, is that the recidivism and the repeat offenders are causing havoc with the general public, and this is where we're seeing a lot of the issues. It's, it's a, it's a tough question. I'll, what we'll do is we'll ask to see if we can get some sort of cost analysis, if, if there's anything available between, let's say, training a provincial or sheriff or municipal police officer versus something with the RCMP. And in keeping in mind that, especially under the provincial policing agreement, 30% of the costs are shared with the federal government, just because of a lot of the federal laws that, that are enforced here as well. So it's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to try and, to quantify in this case, but I'll, I'll see what we can do, and we'll try and get something to you, if that's all right.
Thank you.
I have one. How would you rate your interaction and communication with the sheriffs in Alberta?
As far as like interoperability and joint forces stuff?
Yes.
Well, I, I guess it would depend, obviously, everything is always dependent upon personalities, as we know. There have been, and Kevin, even like in some of the traffic units, they, I think that they've, they're still operating some out of the RCMP detachments. I don't think that we have any more integrated traffic units, though. We do, obviously, the sheriffs do a lot of the prisoner transfers, and the sheriffs do a lot of the, well, they do, well, they got their, the surveillance unit, of course, they're used quite often, they're looking at bringing up the new warrant apprehension team. I, on the ground level, it's normally pretty good, and that's basically because it's the grunts and the guy, like the guys and the girls that are actually getting the job done. Sometimes, it's when you get up into the higher levels, and you see this where perhaps some egos get involved with, you know, different chiefs or senior officers and so on, that you may see some kind of, I guess, abrasiveness? I don't know if that's the right word, but in the end, I, I think that they're in the same position as every other police officer, that, you know, they're working towards the, the shared goal of improved public safety and catching bad guys. I mean, that's usually how it goes. I think it's, it's pretty good. I can tell you just from a personal position, I had done, and I had worked in a joint, like on gang unit with C.P.A., or E.P.S., rather, in Alert, and we did use the sheriffs, and we had a great working relationship. It's been some time since I've done that, but I don't think anything has fundamentally changed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Ross?
I'm just curious, can you tell me about the number of RCMP's there is in Alberta?
Including the? Like, there's members on the federal, federal side, so they deal with a lot of your higher-end drug, drug, or integrated, what is it, inset, integrated national security enforcement teams, drug teams, et cetera. So including the fed side with the provincial and municipal, you're probably looking at about, I want to say, I think it's about 3,500?
I would say 3,800. I think it's 3,500, 3,500 on the, on the provincial side, so that's everybody other than the federal members. And then with the federal members, I want to say 3,875, somewhere in there, just about 3,900.
Yeah, it's between 35 and 4, somewhere thereabouts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to thank you very much for coming on and sharing that information with us. We're in support of the RCMP.
We really appreciate that, and we, we are available for any questions that come up, or, I, I don't, I don't know if, if you had received our budgetary, I think you did receive our pre-budget submission, the 2024 pre-budget submission?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, we'll, we're certainly available. We will, I'll talk with our, some of our analysts to see if we can come up with something surrounding the costs, just to identify what, what it would or could possibly be. It's going to be tough, again, because the central training depot is in Regina, it's where everybody ends up getting trained, so a lot of those costs are shared by all the, excuse me, all the provinces, as well as the federal government. So it kind of... So it kind of, I mean, on its face, it appears certainly cheaper right now to train RCMP. But I can't positively tell you that because I don't know the numbers for certain.
Thank you. We're good. Okay, we'll move on, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and have a good night.
Thank you.
Can I have a? Thank you.
Delegation two, Abe.
We have the RCMP Clarison detachment sergeant here to provide counsel with their Q3, Q3 reporting.
Okay. Your worship, honorable council members? Yes? No, I'm not here looking for something, you're, you're okay.
Worship, Jesus.
We give them a lot of money, so. Okay, I know, I'll try to expedite this report. I know you guys might have a little bit in your agenda in the last presented, probably took up a lot of your time. I don't know if that was expected or not, but the cover letter you got this time with this quarter, like, the last one talked about body worn cameras that they're still playing around with. This one specifically talks about RPAS, or Remote, remotely piloted aircraft systems. They're looking at having each, in their, each individual detachment issued at least one and then having, I want two pilots trained. So we can have at least two, if somebody's away, we'll have a backup person that can fly it. So if we can get one for each detachment, I mean, there's a lot of applications that we could probably use these for. Crime in progress, get it up the air, start hovering. Anybody that might go lost in the hills, we could fly that one there. Fixed wing and rear wing aircraft take forever to get here. And you get a lot of, jump through a lot of hoops in order for you, for them to be brought here. Or this way, that might, you know, expedite a lot of things, maybe help us do our job more effectively in that, in that regard. So that's kind of what they're touching on here. When we might see it, I have no idea. They don't give us timelines, they just talk about, you know, the benefits of, of a, of a tool, if I could say. And I think it would be pretty awesome to have. I'll briefly also touch base in our resources currently, they haven't really changed much. We have a cadet graduating depot on the 8th of April. He's a 21-year-old fella originally from Lethbridge, so he's pretty close. So he'll be starting here anytime after the 8th. Got him paired up with another training member, so he's going to be parallel with him because they have to be pretty much joined at the hip for the first two to four months, pretty much. And it depends how well the, the member works out and fingers crossed that we get that quality of a member. With that being said, another member just got notified of a transfer. He'll be leaving probably in July, they're guessing, going up to St. Albert. So that's Constable Woods. So it's basically a, one of these, right? So it'll be no further ahead. I still have that one member on pat leave until the end of September. And I still have the other member that, he's off unfortunately due to family health issues or whatever, so. But he's still taking up a position, but he's off and definitely we have no date of return at all for him. And also, we may open up a position with the member being in an acting corporal position. His position he left as a constable, we may be looking at trying to fill that, but that's something for staffing to look at. I mean, if I got to have any bodies here, I'd be laughing, working bodies. With two people being away, the other members have to eat that up as well, right? So it's just a heavier workload. And to be honest, this time of year, the workload isn't too bad, but spring and summer is coming. And if it's anything like it was last year when I got here in October, the guys are just running off their feet. I couldn't believe how busy Clarison, Alberta was. But proximity to the highway and everything else, I think that's, that may be, if you want to call it a handicap, so. All right, third quarter. Speaking of that, the APP, the fourth quarter is coming due at the end of the month. So I'll be presenting the fourth quarter, I guess, whenever I can get that in the next meeting. All right, we'll get into enhanced road safety. See better with these on or off, I can't tell. As you know, speeding and moving driving behaviors, we targeted 250 infractions or 250 charges. Cumulative stats as of the end of the third quarter were down to 147, so we are still 103 short. However, at the time, I felt that a lot of these stats, these numbers could be salvaged. We got some members that are doing kudos, traffic work out there, whenever they can get out of the office. I haven't tallied those numbers up yet, I'm kind of saving them for the end of this month when the quarter is done. And then I'm kind of surprised everybody to see how we did. Impaired, we wanted to go from 2 to 30. Now, I didn't set these numbers, you already set prior to my arrival. I thought this was a little bit high. We've had six so far out of the, out of the 30, so we're not going to meet that goal, unfortunately. Now, seeing the members aren't stopping people, they're massing everybody, which is the mandatory approved screening device, which we can read to anybody that we pull over, it's automatic, and we're getting zeros that we're coming across. So it's a good thing. I mean, the numbers, we're not meeting the target, but then again, it's bittersweet that we don't meet the goal, but yet again, we're not finding them, which is, we're happy with that as well. And we don't get very many complaints. We've had a couple and the members act on them immediately, so they'll go out and look for them. But other than that, yeah, we're not being inundated with impaired driving.
I know they're out doing it because I've been pulled over more in the last six months than I have in the last 20 years of my life.
There's a reason for that.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe you should change your muffler.
Do you drive a Dodge by chance?
Back to your report, sir.
Okay, so that's enhanced road safety. Crime reduction, one of the things they had here was conducting prolific offender checks on conditions. We've had seven people on conditions as of late, people going off, coming, coming on, it's kind of the flat number we've had. The members have been conducting checks on those individuals and lo and behold, they're being compliant. I don't think we've breached anybody yet. I think that now those numbers dropped quite a bit. I didn't get the stats from the girls today. Had a surprise meeting there, come in until late, so I didn't get a chance to get that all done. But none of the numbers have dropped, there's not a whole lot of people on a lot of conditions. And we had, I think, four or five people on warrant status, so we had a crew come in and just rounded everybody up. So we caught them all. So we're pretty good with that. And a lot of them were caught out of town as well, because they like to hide, right? So yeah, so 22 checks were conducted out of the 30 that they set, so we're eight short of that. And that's, say, that was at the end of December, because this is October 1 to December 31st. Education awareness campaigns, members talking with community groups, schools and alike, even councils. We targeted 12 of those talks to be done and right now, as of the end of this quarter, we, we hit the 12. So we're going to surpass that. Operation Street Sweep, Crime Suppression Shifts, I mentioned that about the warrants. And that just happened in the last month. So I think we had four of those targeted, four people, but the target cumulative status as of the end of this quarter was one. But I know that's changed significantly this last quarter. So we'll probably exceed the target of goal of four that they initially put on here. Foot patrols, out of the, from 30 to 40 so far as the end of last quarter, there is 22. But with the warm weather coming up, I hope to see the guys get out more often. Going on to the next one, has visibility shifts, I don't know if you see me driving around, but I drive around for about an hour or so every morning and in the afternoons. I'm just all over town. I'm everywhere. So I try to get out and just wait for the people, just show that they weren't about. My mom and her friends are saying that they never saw the police. So I'm surprised when I heard that when I moved here, so I figured, well, I'm going to get out and try to be a little bit more proactive in that way. And we get out when we can. I mean, like I said, we do what we can, who we have, but I don't mind getting out and doing my thing. Presentations, meetings, target to four, or 12, or sorry, and as of the end of last quarter, we've had 15. So we've surpassed that. So all these things that we set out to do, I mean, we're, we're doing well, except the traffic enforcement side of things is just down a little bit. Probably due to the resources come in, going, members here, members gone. The work closes at the time, which seems to be... Yes?
Just on that topic, I know you're giving us a report, but I just wondered if I could poke a little bit here. So I believe one of the last times you came in, you were talking about everybody being certified now and trained on radar guns and all this.
I believe everybody is, no, yes.
Right? So living in a small town Clarison, one of the things we hear about is the speeding trucks and those types of things. Just wondering, I know it's our priority, but just wondering if you could explain a little bit what, yeah, we have that little bit of a shortage of staff right now type of thing, but it is a priority. And do you guys just set up for days at time or something? Why can't we have more photo radar observation if we're all trained?
Photo radar?
Oh, sorry, sorry, just radar.
Okay. I mean, like I said, the guys will get out, the particular, Bruce Jackson, I mean, he's, he's, he's the traffic guru. He's out, he'll set up, north end of town, south end of town, middle of town. I mean, he's the guy that likes to do that sort of thing. Other members have done it, but you can lead a horse to water. I mean, I'm trying to get the members, trying to encourage them to get out and do more traffic enforcement, whether it be speeding seat belts or anything like that.
So he has been on a little bit with the radar, are they trying to do that survey and that? So has he, are they catching a lot of drivers? They are, so we are getting a lot of tickets out there for the truck drivers, so that's a good thing. Just so people out there know that it is going on and they are being stopped. That's, we just hear about it, but I, I, I see you guys out there, I just want to make sure that...
I mean, semis is kind of a unique thing because as soon as you stop one semi driver, they're on their radios with everybody else, right? So they kind of spread the word. But there's so many trucks, so many companies coming through, not everybody's on the same channel, so they're not going to, you know, hear all that, right? Who's going to get targeted? But we do get some guys coming through at ridiculous speeds. I mean, absolutely ridiculous. I don't know if these guys are busy watching TV or on their phones or what they're doing, but it's, you know...
I just want to say I appreciate, because I do see you guys out there doing that, but again, it just needs to be said sometimes and people do know that you guys...
I really understand, empathize, like you said, we try to get out there as often as we can. I mean, I have seen the sheriffs around, so they are here from time to time, we just never know when they're coming. And they don't, you know, they don't let us know. I think on Saturday, I seen there's a bunch, south of town, they're having a bunch of people pulled over. So they are, they are around.
They did a blitz on Saturday.
And they kind of compliment us. Another thing was drug enforcement actions. That's one thing I can honestly say, we've, we don't have a much, we don't have a lot of intel on drug activity in the community. And drug enforcement is intelligence driven. We need the community to come forward, we need tips. We've had one Crime Stoppers tip, anonymous complaining, right? Well, we can't act on that. What it does is bring attention to us, but then again, if there's no, no chronic, or people chronically complaining about the same individuals and these tips just keep coming and coming in, okay, now we have a problem. But if it's just one, I mean, I could say you're doing it, but what's to say you are? We need something to corroborate the tip, we can't just go ahead and act on it, kick in a door. I mean, there's just no way that's going to happen. I don't think there's any big quantities in town that we're aware of, none of us are. It's just the regular users that are going out to wherever, picking up, coming home and using it or selling to their friends, maybe in their really small amounts, to be honest.
I think it's gone down a significant amount over the last...
I mean, there are communities not too far away that do have huge, huge problems. Pecani's one. I mean, they got a huge problem, they're getting overdoses down there left and right, too, which is not too far to Brock and of course, Fort McLeod and Pitcher Creek. That corridor there is, they're having some big time problems. Lucky for us, it's not really, it's probably passing through, but it's not stopping, just from what I can tell. Mayor Council, that's my report as I've read. Just before I finish up, I just wanted to put another thing out there, that with the fourth quarter coming to an end at the end of this month, we'll be canvassing again to the councils, this is the last one, to find out what the priorities would be for the communities that you feel we should be doing. When I was at Staveley there a few weeks back, I put the question forward and I said, you don't have to reply right away, but their CAO said, nope, they're going to answer you right now. So they made everybody stay to answer the question, so. But in this case here, I mean, if there's any concerns that the community has or the councils have and they want to see us focus more on, that's what we're trying to do, so I can, I can compile the next APP cycle, 2425. I know, driving around town, that seat belts don't seem to be a high priority with a lot of people driving. I'm not going to lie. I mean, it's, I don't think they know what it is, but when I run the fatal stats for Alberta, I think 80% of the people that died all got tossed, every one of them. You know, and these are on secondary roads, nothing on the major highways, of course, unless it's weather related, say. But they're on the secondary highways and, ah, what do I need a seatbelt for? Well, that's why. So that's kind of one thing I'm looking at. But the community, you have a say as to how, what we're going to do and what you'd like to see more of. I mean, we can leave a status quo, or if you wanted to change something like that, feel free to let me know.
Counselor Meiser?
Just when it comes to traffic safety, we've been fielding a lot of complaints about speeding and running stop signs within the town. Could there be more patrols done on that and ticket, ticketing?
Oh, absolutely. I think Staveley brought up the same thing as well. Basically, not so much speeding while there is a little bit, but the stop signs, like you said. I mean, people just slow down just to make the turn. So they don't roll their vehicle, right? So that's, that's the problem. I can definitely look into that.
Any other questions? Suggestions? Concerns?
I'll do my annual bid for keeping the speeds down up by the schools.
Another place I drive by all the time.
It's, it's, you know, my wife and I were talking about it today, I drove by and I, I've been doing, looking at that school for 30 years and I can't imagine we haven't picked one off yet, but, you know, knock on wood.
There's certain times that you notice.
Coming and going, right? Coming and going, you know, at, you know, 8:30 in the morning and 3:30 in the afternoon.
So pick up and drop off times.
Yep.
Perfect. I think we're good.
Duly noted. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, action items, requests for decision. Abe?
This is a delegation response from last council meeting.
Thank you.
The Chinook Watershed Crew met with council to talk about their drought preparedness and mitigate water mitigation forum, which is scheduled for Monday, April 15th, at 5:30 at the community center. They have requested that the town donate $500 to support the event. There is a bit of information here, council, about some historical items that council has supported. Just to give you an idea of what expenses and requests might be coming. To date this year, council hasn't provided any financial support to any of these requests. If you recall, there was a Kraken request at the last meeting for waiving of the pool fees, but that doesn't come out of the budget, the budgeted funds that council has for community nonprofit requests.
Questions, concerns, Counselor Cutler?
I've tried to look up, I've tried to read the poster and stuff, do we know? So this is an organization called the Watershed Crew, right? And so this presentation is to provide information for the community about the water shortage, but is it, I, I don't know how else to say it, but is it to promote their cause and get people to sign up to, to support that? I, I struggle, I, I want the information out there, but I want nonpartisan, not, that's not the right word. I want, I, I, I struggle with understanding where we sit with this, if it's promoting this versus just giving information. That's what I struggle with.
Can I speak on that?
I, I attended the meeting, the same meeting in Lumbric, put on by Livingstone Landowners Group. It is nonpartisan, strictly information.
So, and I've been working with them a little bit as well, strictly with the, with helping them put, put this together for some food and so on. them put, put this together for some food and so on. My explanation that I've received is that they are trying to bring in as many different personalities and perspectives to the water or potential water issue and drought mitigation. They've got a panel of people, yeah, so they're panel of experts, biologist, a rancher, geography, environmental person, so they've got a, they've got some science-based backing to it, which, which I'm, I'm hoping comes across as nonpartisan as possible, because I don't think the water is a partisan issue. And for that reason, I, I've lent some, some personal support to them for that reason. However, I wouldn't be in favor of the town donating the three hundred at this point, simply because I don't want the town to be perceived as potentially partisan. That said, they've also reached out to the MD, which is providing a information table, and I believe Jason is going there to present information, so we're giving as much full-scope information and as factual information as possible to make it happen. And as much as I feel comfortable with that aspect of things, I still want the town to take one step away financially from it, but be there to provide information in, in a knowledgeable, knowledgeable stance.
And the nonpartisan was probably the wrong wording, it was more supporting a, like a recruitment kind of meet, like that was what I was concerned about, but not necessarily partisan, but yeah, so thank you, I appreciate the information.
I agree with you a hundred percent, because I've had some folks that have actually come and seen my business name attached to it, because we're providing some food, and worried about me as a partisan person, and it has absolutely nothing to do with partisan, which party or who it is, because I look at the list of names that are presenting, and when you do some background search on it, it's all over the freaking map, so that I appreciate, and that's why I'm there.
Councillor Kettles?
If we're uncomfortable with the three hundred dollar ask, would there be an opportunity to do a three hundred dollar donation to the community center, to do it as they please?
How does that sit?
I don't see why we would donate three hundred dollars to the community center.
Okay.
So what they're, excuse me, but what they're saying is they want the cost to, to include what their, their sound system, the hall rental, their advertising and promotion, hospitality, that's, to me, that's not going into a, you know, bias thing, you know, but it's just wanting to help out with the cost, and then there's a meal, is there that night too? So that would.
They're providing a free beef on the bun for whoever shows up.
Oh, is that right? Okay, because it's saying also the event is to create a greater awareness for drought preparation and migration among the community, so it's an informal meeting, gathering, so.
I, I just personally don't think that it's the town's responsibility to be a part of that process, the building's there, we support it, we've talked about it, we're not saying anything, we're providing staff to go to the, to the event to, to help speak on it, so, and then with the three hundred dollar donation to the, I, I, I just, I'd like, I'd like to save that for something else if they need it for another thing, that's all.
And I, I think it would be worthwhile for, as a town, to say, we agree with the, the information being provided and, and support the, the event in its, in its operation, but I'm okay with not putting any money into it.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to support the Chinook Watershed Crew's event at the Clarleson Community Center.
Question?
Sorry, you have to put a dollar amount on that.
On April fifteenth with a donation of three hundred dollars.
Were they asking for five?
Yes, they were asking for five. So first on they asked for five, and on the donation form, they asked for three.
Question?
Moved by councillor Simmer to support the Chinook Watershed Crew's event at the Clarleson Community Center on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, with a donation of three hundred dollars.
All in favor? The motion's defeated. Next, correspondence Municipal District of Willow Creek, Abe.
So this correspondence is regarding the MD of Willow Creek's contribution to the, under the inter-ministerial collaboration framework recreation agreement. Every year, they do provide, in accordance with the, the agreement, fifty percent of fixed operating costs, fixed costs being utilities, insurance and telecommunications, towards town, the arena, town recreation buildings, the arena, the curling club and the pool. And so due to unforeseen inflationary, inflationary pressures, the MD has agreed to waive, there's a stipulation in the agreement, that inflationary increases, financial increases would be limited, but due to, again, inflationary pressures coming out of COVID nineteen, where the utilities and costs of operating these buildings far exceeded the, the limit, the MD has actually waived that cap. They did that in, for twenty twenty-three, and they're doing it again for twenty twenty-four. So they are going above and beyond what is required in the agreement. And so this is just some information, correspondence to council and all the participating municipalities under the ICF agreement, that they've gone ahead and gathered the fixed operating costs for the town's buildings, again, the arena, pool and curling, curling rinks. And there will be an increase, again, this year as there was last year, information there, just there for information, council.
Councillor Cutler?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank the MD and having such a great working relationship. Again, they were forethinking and they, they came to us and offered it, so again, I think it's a great thing that we have with the ICF and the Recreation Committee, and I just want to thank them for, for thinking of our community, so.
Could we send a letter of appreciation to the MD?
Yeah.
Can the mayor sign?
Sure.
I'm just trying to make the motion to you.
I'd like to make a motion to send a appreciation, thank you, letter of recognition to the MD regarding the recreation.
Moved by councillor Cutler to direct administration to send a letter of recognition and thanks to the MD of Willow Creek for their support of recreation in the town of Clarleson.
All in favor? Next, correspondence Royal Canadian Legion, Alberta Northwest Command, Abe?
So the Royal Canadian Legion Alberta Northwest Command is looking for sponsorships for their annual recognition book, military service recognition book. Historically, the town has purchased, I believe it's a quarter-page ad in the publication. The, the book is, again, it's distributed through all provincial legion branches, and it will be directly available to over forty thousand members, provided the community and public facilities, schools and to many other sponsors. Looks like they're releasing a digital version of this as well, and they have provided a copy of the ad that the town has purchased in the past, it's recognizing the Air Force Base and Clarleson answering the call. The cost for that, what, is five hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, about a ten percent increase over last year.
Questions, concerns? Councillor Kettles?
I would move that we support the legion with a quarter-page ad to the tune of five hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents plus GST.
Question?
Moved by councillor Kettles to support the military service recognition book produced by the Royal Canadian Legion Campaign Office in the amount of five hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents plus GST for twenty twenty-five.
All in favor? Correspondence Clarleson District Fair Board, Abe?
Yeah, the fair board is doing some fundraising for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four bench show, and they are looking to sell ad space in their bench show catalog. Town again has supported this in the past, had the bench show with purchasing of an ad space. Previously, it was a full page, a hundred and fifty-five dollars would be the, the There are some examples of the ads and the messages that the town has provided in the past. Any questions?
Questions, concerns, councillor Cutler?
Are we just make, can we just make it one motion? Like, we have to do the ad and the prizes, right, we can do it all as one motion? I'll make the motion that we do the hundred and fifty-five dollar ad and the six hundred dollar donation for prizes over the next two years.
Councillor Meister?
I would also agree with supporting the ad, but I think with the water restrictions that we're facing, it would not be prudent for the town to be supporting gardening initiatives this year.
Gardening has a lot to do without water.
It does, but it may send the wrong message.
Comments?
Special prize for rock gardens?
That was great, actually, that was impressive.
Privilege. We have a motion on the floor. Question?
Moved by councillor Cutler to donate seven hundred and fifty-five dollars towards the Clarleson District Fair Day's bench show as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, information brief Rural Community Immigration Pilot, Abe?
So the town has been part of the Rural and Northern Immigration Pilot, that is a federal immigration program, pilot program since twenty nineteen, and we recently, the town has recently received word that that pilot will be ending in August. Little bit of information on the pilot program, the town has welcomed ninety immigrants to Clarleson, approximately a hundred and eighty members, including family members, a hundred and eighty people to the community. So that pilot program is going to close, there will be two new pilot programs, immigration, federal immigration pilot program's coming up in its place, they are scheduled to have intakes or start in the fall, I believe. We don't have a lot of information about those new programs, but there will be a rural community immigration pilot and a Francophone community immigration pilot, those will be replacing the RNET program. They are still pilot programs, it was our understanding that the pilot program that we're currently in would get transitioned into a permanent community-based immigration, but they're proposing, the, the federal government is proposing to release more pilot programs, basically built on learnings from the existing pilot programs in the existing Application process, we know that there will be another application process, we've been told that it will be similar to the application process that the town went through in twenty nineteen when they were part of the, when they applied to join the RNET program. And I think, stay tuned, we're supposed to be getting information by the end of March about the new, the new pilot program, we're kind of there right now, I researched the new pilot programs today, there's nothing up yet, so we would expect some information to come up soon though. And administration will, will monitor the, monitor that, the new programs and provide information to council when we give more information.
Thank you. Information brief debiter repaid. Yes. Abe?
So the town recently received notice that a debenture has been repaid, this was a twenty-year term, started in two thousand and three, and it was for sewer line maintenance and upgrading in the south end of town, around Highway five-twenty and Third Street. And so some sewer upgrades, at the time, town borrowed a million dollars, total project cost is one point three four eight million, and they borrowed one million of that. And just a notice that that has been paid off. The town currently has three debentures in place, one for the Pine Cooley Water Project, that one matures in twenty thirty-three, that's a twenty-five-year term. Sewer trunk replacement, that is Eighth Street to the airport, that was a debenture of four hundred thousand, that matures in twenty twenty-eight, and the multi-use building with daycare and play school, which is where we're currently gathered, is a thirty-year term, that matures in twenty fifty. So all told, that is five million dollars on the town's borrowing debt limit, the town's total debt limit is fourteen, which leaves about nine million remaining in available debt. Those numbers are set by provincial legislation, and they, they go according to a formula of revenues and, primarily revenues and what have you.
Thank you. Information brief current water shortage situation, Abe?
So some information here, council, about the Pine Cooley Reservoir and the water shortage that we have in the region and in the town here. Just some general information to update the public that we are still in, and, and council, that we are still in a water shortage situation, currently in stage three of our water shortage response plan and water restrictions. Some updates on water consumption, the restrictions did have, did have an, an effect, there was nineteen percent less water used, or about seventy-two hundred cubic meters in the summer months, from July to August in twenty twenty-three than there was in the same time in previous Any questions about water shortages, is there any questions that council has or you're hearing from the public that, that you need answered? Is there any questions that council has or you're hearing from the public that, that you need answered?
Questions, concerns?
Sorry, nothing too major, just people wanting to know if we're just staying where we're at and.
Councillor Cutler? Oops, sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
What is the process? Like, I, I know the numbers, I know, so if we want to go to level four, is there, I want to say this carefully, preventative level four before we get to the market level four? Is there, is there interest in that? Is there? Or we wait until we hit the 1043 and then we make a motion and we do it? Like, I, I mean, if it's, if it's not looking good, I don't know why we wait to hit the marks? If we can be preventative in avoiding the marks at a slower pace, I don't know.
Councillor Carls?
I think similar to last summer, the town did a, and administration did a pretty good job as far as the communication aspect of things. We have to follow that through all the way through spring. And I, I don't think you can do necessarily a preventative stage four as much as you can educate people about the repercussions for stage four and just keep that, that open dialogue and push out the information as much as possible. I know I can't turn on the TV and see any Alberta news that doesn't have 15 freaking articles right now on water. Everybody's well aware of it, it's just a matter of coming in, coming out of it and, and again, to the point of gardening and lawns and so on and so forth. That I'd have to be refreshed on stage three, that, does that put us on alternate days or no watering?
One day a week.
One, yeah. So if we, if we start off at that level, I think you'll see a good chunk of people that go, you know what, it's okay to have it brown this year. And, and save the money.
Or use rain barrels.
Or, well, and use your rain barrels and, and all of the other items that, that admin is so good at, at communicating on.
Okay.
Sorry.
Councillor Meister?
You can currently order rain barrels from Clarus Home Recreation.
What does stage four involve?
Put him on the spot like that.
So it, it depends on if you're dealing, we have different restrictions for commercial entities, residential entities and institutional entities. But I can pull up the. I could pull up the water shortage response plan. So there, there are some pretty heavy implications for stopping irrigating your, your lawn altogether, right? And some business implications as well. It really depends on what entity you're talking about, but certainly as you can see on the screen here, lawn and garden manual sprinkling, it's just prohibited, right? And there are implications for the town as well. If we go into the institutional users, it's actually down here. Nope, it's not on this one. But Spray Park, I believe at level four is, is shut off. There's even indication in there that the pool should be shut off at level four. And so this is actually one thing administratively that we're working through right now, is we're looking at coming through, implementing the water shortage response plan. We had a lot of questions last year and we're looking for some clarification on, and so maybe some updates. So we're, we were actually working on that today. So we can have some more answers on what that looks like as we progress into the year if, if things don't improve and, and have some planning. One of the other items that we've been working through the winter was, it's in the info brief on the agenda here, was the water freezing and potentially harming the, the intake screens and the infrastructure down there. Looks like we're going to get through that without having any issues. However, if the drought extends and we find ourselves in a worse situation with water levels going into the winter next year, certainly this will be an issue that we'll have to deal with. And so we've been working with Alberta Environment and with the MD staff as well to look into a bubbling system that actually keeps the water from freezing around the intakes so that infrastructure doesn't get damaged as it freezes and the water levels drop. So I think some pre-planning on that one, we, we've been doing. We're looking into what that looks like moving into, again, you, I think at this point we have to assume that things, I think the best thing to do is have a cautious approach and assume that things aren't going to magically get better. We hope they will, but we are planning as if they, they aren't so we can be as ready as possible. We are, we also have some information on what our operations might look like this year on the info brief, council. So we do have to do flushing of the sewer systems to maintain the integrity of the system, to maintain our chlorine residuals and, and so that does have to happen, but we can time that and we can take some of that water and reuse that water when we do flushing. We can use some of that water for our sewer flushing and for, for other, other needs. So the potential of, we will be able to do some watering, so potentially some of our watering of flowers and then what have you, so. What else? Again, we talked a little bit about a spray park, we might have to assess what to do there. We did actually shorten, proactively shorten the hours of the spray park by a few hours last year. But again, if we hit stage four, that will trigger us to close that spray park. Also looking into alternative water sources, we do have storm ponds, Frog Creek Wetlands that we could potentially pull water from to irrigate some of the town gardens. But we, we do follow the restrictions for our operations, for our parks, for our recreation areas and we'll continue to do that and stay on top of that.
Councillor Cutler?
I do really like the proposed, you want to scroll down a little bit there? Well, the other way, the other way. Proposed operational adjustments. If we want to be leaders, if we want, I mean, I don't see why we can't put some totes out there to collect rainwater and do those types of things and, and use the fire. I, I, I like those ideas because it sets a good example that we're willing to do that. And I mean, it might take a little extra work and stuff, but I mean, using the fire hydrants, like you say, alter, planning that with the flushes and stuff, I think would be a very key way. And I know we keep talking about the water park, but I'd rather have drinking water than kids playing in water. So I, I know it's a tough call, but I think that's something we have to look at, so.
Councillor Ross?
I know I've had questions about, if we go to a level four, would that affect the car washes in our community, which is businesses which we want to support, but there is questions around that.
Yep. And so we are getting some, that's one of the questions that we're looking into right now to see how that level four does affect them, because there are some implications for businesses and for car washes. So we're reaching out to Alberta Environment and Protected Areas and our engineer to get an answer on that one. But as, as it reads right now, it, it does look like there are some restrictions, so we'll get a firm answer on that.
Any other questions?
One, one other item administratively that we're, we're looking into right now is, again, if things don't improve, there are provisions or recommendations in the water shortage response plan that if the water continues to drop, we will eventually be at a point where we have to actually pump into our intake, where the water levels will drop below our intake and we'll have to actually pump into our groundwater line. So we're looking into what all would be involved with that. We don't know what all is involved. That is a little ways away still, assuming things don't improve, it's still a little ways away, but we're, we're looking into that.
Councillor Carls?
Just more of a comment. I know because our business is one of the higher water usage facilities, we got clarification from our insurance company that if there is a water interruption with drought, it is covered by our business interruption insurance. So there is some comfort that businesses that have high, higher water needs might want to take that extra step with clarification with their, with their insurance companies.
Cool. Any other comments, concerns? Now's your chance.
Ah, the snow's going to melt, it's going to be fine.
It's not enough on the snowpack.
It's going to be fine.
It did not affect anything.
Next. CAO report. Ape?
Yep, this is the, pardon me, monthly report from administration on the operations of the town. Any questions?
Information brief council committee report. Anything anybody wants to add? Thank you to everyone. Councillor Meister?
The only thing I would like to add is that the CARES AGM has been moved to this Wednesday at 7:30 PM at the library. We did that one last week.
Okay. Information brief council resolution status. Questions?
Got to get a bigger list.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to adopt the information items?
Information items as presented.
Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer to adopt the information items as were presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to go in camera. Councillor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer to go in camera at 8:26 PM for the following items. A, intergovernmental relations, section 19. B, intergovernmental relations, section 19. C, confidential evaluations, section 19. Business interests of a third party, section 16.
All in favor? Approved. Camera off, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to come out of in camera, please. Councillor Cutler? Question?
Moved by councillor Cutler to come out of in camera at 9:19 PM.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to adjourn. Oh, councillor Carls? Camera off.